Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege of prayer. Thank you for your mercy and love and guidance. We pray that you would be present here in our meeting tonight as decisions are made and discussions are held. Please help us to see what's best for the city and understand what is good for all. In Jesus' name, amen. So now at seven o'clock, I've called a meeting to order. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, will you do the roll call, please?
Hi, Connell. Chad Fuller.
Here.
Mindy Galloping.
Here.
Mary Lambert.
Here.
Bob Horner.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Mayor Swedman.
Here.
All the town for except council members, Steve Wallace.
Both of them did let me know in advance that they would not be here tonight. Looking now for approval of the agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on then to reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting, August 18th.
I move that we suspend the rules. We have the reading and approve the minutes from the August 18th, 2022 regular meeting. Second.
Motion from Chad, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have anyone here with a proof report or presentation? I don't believe we do. So moving on to public comment, is anyone here for public comment? Communications, then Devin, I believe you have something for us.
Tonight you received some communications. It's a tentative schedule if you should pass ordinance 365 and 366 tonight. And then also I have a letter of resignation to read. August 16th, 2022. Dear Mayor and Perry City Council, I am resigning from the Perry Planning Board as of August 16th, 2022. Thank you for the opportunity, Mary Plowman. And that's all I got for tonight.
We do have responding to that resignation on the agenda later under new business, so we'll address that at that time. So moving then into mayor and department head reports. I don't have any reports, so we'll move right into department heads. Megan, do you want to go first?
Sure.
Otters, we're in the building a second full week of August. Been in the building for three days, so they have to do all their fieldwork. They are still working at things on their end. And I have received a few follow-up questions as they continue to work, but I do not have a timeline yet, but I think the things are building along well. As a reminder to residents, as we enter September, that summer tax bills are due September 30th. After September 30th, there will be a 1% penalty. In your packets, I provided a new credit card use policy draft for your review and possible approval at a future meeting. This would replace two policies currently in place, one from 2014, one from 1995. I think that the one with dated 1995 probably should have been repealed when the one in 2014 was approved. They're very similar, some overlapping vertige. We currently utilize a prepaid debit card process that is preloaded with $1,000 in funds. It's kind of like a cashless, pettiness cash system that we use now. There's one credit card at my desk, but as other department heads need it, they come to me and check it out. I would like to switch to a traditional credit card that's paid monthly. There are systems in place through the state of Michigan that require if a municipality have a credit card, that it has to be paid off within three days. So it's a no interest account that has a three-day timeline for paying off. I'm sort of looking into options for doing that. So, but in order to do that, I think we should update our policy first. And this would allow for a department head to have a credit card in their own name should they choose. It would still require the department head to follow the purchasing policy, which right now is about a $500 per purchasing that without a pool. So that would still remain the same. The credit card use policy does reference the purchasing policy for what it can be used to spend on, just but for tracking expenditures and paying off the balance, it would be a simpler process. We have a credit card versus this prepaid debit card. So that is in your packets along with copies of the updated policies that I'm looking to place.
Does anybody have questions for Megan about that topic at this time? Okay, we can all have time to review this. Megan would be attending the first meeting of October, so if it's okay with everybody, it'll give you time to review this, give her time to finish following up, and then we can put it on the agenda for discussion, possible adoption, and repealing the other two. Does that work for everybody for the October or fifth meeting or whatever that is? Okay. What else you got?
That's it. Until later.
All right.
Thank you.
Who wants to go next? John?
So myself personally walked approximately 70% of the sidewalks in the city. The other, the rest of the DPW staff kind of helped me get stuff done so we could do, get some numbers together for that grant. You know, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of around 30,000 square foot. Is it all terrible, bad? No. Some of the things that we noted when we were out there, you know, sidewalks end in places 20 feet before they would cross the street, things like that. If we were to extend them out, they would need five foot with the ADA pad and an opening, most of them. The vast majority would not need any curb or anything, but you know, it's, I put it in there and I think when I put together the whole grant, we were around 381,000, you know, I mean, it's kind of an estimate at this point, just me putting everything, compiling it together. While we were out there though, you know, the sidewalks, when you have a four-foot sidewalk, because we kicked the edges back and, and you got 20 inches of concrete exposed, I don't know, we don't have an ordinance saying that someone can, that I know of, go and tell the homeowners or ask the homeowners, but I would request if the homeowners can and are able, maybe to edge those and our sidewalks would become more passable and look better in appearance. We, DPW edges, I don't do it every year, but as, you know, maybe every other year since I've been superintendent, will edge all of our properties. And, you know, the McQueen house has been done, it's been done all around here, any place that we needed, through the park, heading up to Perry Oaks. But, you know, you got four foot and you got maybe two foot in a lot of areas. And I, and I understand that people like the sidewalks are so bad. Well, they're so bad unless council wants us to go and dig them out, you know. I, I don't know what the resolution would be. You put new sidewalks in and guess what? The grass is going to grow back over them. And because it's already in places, you know, you can, 52 is not too bad because they built it high enough, but there's places where the joints are full of grass and, you know, the 60 inches down to four foot. And I know that, but you know, that's the sidewalk issue that, that I see. I don't have the answer for it, but I'm just reporting on, you know, this is the findings.
Mary, do you think the ordinance committee could talk about that?
I already put a note that we will.
Yeah.
Because we are doing some things to look at any of our sidewalk ordinance. And I think this may be a little touchy feel, but one of the things might be that if we're lucky enough to land some grant money and we start seeing some things happen with those that need to be significant repair, I'm not beyond saying, let's put a push on to try to motivate homeowners to get out and edge. They see a lot of damage and a lot of tree roots and everything else. It's like, why am I going to edge my sidewalk when the rest of the neighborhood is in such disrepair? So hopefully one can kind of.
I mean, there's sidewalks that are erupted, there's stuff that was done in the last 10 years at, at these big maples that have already popped again, where the roots needed to be chopped down even further. I don't know what the risk to the tree is at that point, but we've been going around and.
I think Bob was telling us about something that you put. What do you do? You put it on the root at the sidewalk?
Copper sulfate.
There, there is a growth retardant, but it won't hurt if you only do, you know, the sidewalk side of it. The tree has enough roots, depends on the cost, of course, with how the tree is. Your square footage, 30,000, is that what has to be repaired or that's what total we have?
Well, that would be all what, what we calculated and what we, anything that had a lip over an inch and/or was all cankered up and busted, you know, through driveway, depends on, you know, some of it was smooth, but it was, it was all kind of, you know, the, the upper layer had gave way because of your salt or whatever. You know, some of it sunk down, not necessarily sunk, but you know, dust and everything, the grass, you know, if it started level 70 years ago, now it's.
All the grass is raised up around it.
Yeah, it just keeps, and you know, there was a house that I noticed, the guy he edged, he's on a corner and he edged the entire thing. Is it the greatest sidewalk? No, but now it's passable and stood to be in 30, 20-some inches. It's a full four foot.
Right.
And we can go in there. We, we have been, and I, I mean, it's, is it the best practice? I know other towns do it. Some of the lips, we've been grinding the edge off in the higher traffic areas and then we're working our way out, trying to save a little cost on overall, you know. The best thing to do is replace whole runs because you're forever running a cement truck all over the place doing, you know, two flags here, go another block, it, it just, so that's the situation with the sidewalks. There's not an easy fix for it, it's just, is what it is. So we're trying to do some things to make it, make it better. People asked, seen us out, what we were trying to do.
Right.
You know, when I have the opportunity, I don't do it in a nasty way, but ask people if, you know, if you edged it a little, that would help us to know, to be able, better evaluate it.
That's a little.
You know, when it's, when the ground is soft, either in the spring or in the fall when the rains are. We finished up crack sealing, we didn't get as far as we wanted, but we're going to see how it holds up, high-traffic streets out in Perry Lake Drive. And I think we'll probably do some more of it, not, probably not this year, but maybe in the spring. If we can save the streets, you know, for $10,000 rather than spending, you know, in a subdivision, a couple hundred thousand, it's probably worth it to try to extend the life out and keep the water out of the asphalt from blowing it out. Then other than that, day-to-day stuff that we're doing, unless someone has something else for me?
Any other questions for John?
John.
Okay, John. Kyle?
Good evening, everyone. So the other side of the tower project regarding the county, I have left a message for a gentleman whose name I received from American Tower. I have not heard back from him, but I will be following up either tomorrow or Monday regarding that. I had the opportunity to attend training last week, instructor-level training. It's called Raider, and it's regarding solo officer engagement. So we train active violence with all of our officers as if we were a team, but we've all agreed through the years that we're not going to sit outside in an active violent situation and wait. We're going to go in and take care of the threat, but we had, had no training regarding that. We, we go in as if we have three or four guys behind us and we really don't. This is something that I can instruct countywide. There were two county deputies that attended with me as well from Chilwosse, and there's a sergeant that's already trained from Chilwosse County. Before it was planned on rolling this out countywide for all the officers. It was incredible training. Recommend it to any police officer to, to take advantage of this training. I look forward to training everyone in it, and it's a much-needed skill set that is not taught currently. So very, very happy with that training and look forward to utilizing it. I did get an email this week regarding the Veterans Day Parade. We have been passed over a couple times, a couple of years now, and it is our turn. And I very confidently told them that yes, we would host the Veterans Day Parade, November 11th. The mayor and I have talked about a time. Traditionally, it's been at six o'clock, but on November 11th every year, it's pitch blackout. So we're, I'm going to talk with the BMW commander and see if there's a possibility of moving that up to possibly five o'clock, but that's not set in stone yet. We still have some details we need to work out, but I would like to see that moved up so we can actually see the parade and not just hear or imagine it go by.
Yeah, I think that's important. I mean, when they have it in the city of Owatso, they have big tall streetlights that spread everywhere and they can still see, but I do remember trying to watch the parade here in Perry a few years ago and we just couldn't see because our, our streetlights don't spread the light as well. So that would be nice.
Last month, I was appointed by the county commissioners to the county corrections board. There was a police chief representative spot in there, and I was appointed as one of the local chiefs to partake in that. I still have to go get sworn up at the clerk's office, but it's a monthly meeting. We just kind of oversee corrections in the county and make sure that things are going as needed. And I have been working with the Perry football program. They have decided to not do a military appreciation night or game as they have in the past. Instead, they're doing a first responder appreciation night.
That's nice.
And so Coach Jeff Bott asked me to help organize that with him. That will be next Friday night here at Perry. And we have several people lined up to represent several different disciplines, dispatch, nursing, military, law enforcement, fire, and EMS. And we have the sheriff's department doubling up with law enforcement as well, so.
So that's a week from tomorrow?
That is a week from tomorrow night. And that's all I have. Folks, have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Devin. You have anything? Moving on then to our committee reports.
Just a quick, excuse me, a quick update on the ordinance committee. We did meet last Thursday, the 25th, and have drafted a proposed revision for open burning ordinance. Got a couple of minor changes to update on that, and we'll be forwarding that to Devin to get on to have Justin English get a look at it. So we'll be seeing that here, not the next meeting, certainly the first meeting in October. Just to reiterate our fact that we do not allow open burning in the city and get the ordinance in line with, with that. We did, Mr. Honeycutt last meeting was in and had some issues with regard to ordinance activity. We did spend some time going through some of his key points and fundamentally, though they weren't right evident on the surface, we do have a barking dog ordinance that is in place and on the books so that if there is a product dog barking issue, we do have an ordinance to address that. There is also one that talks about animal sanitation on private property that needs to be dealt with, and that's also on the books. The one area that we are going to take a look at, we've talked about it in here previously, is our nuisance abatement. Ordinance right now is primarily dealing with visual aesthetic kinds of things. We don't have anything directly in that area that we've uncovered thus far that deals with objectionable orders in the air that we're going to at least try to address. Is there a way to define that? It's still an open concern that we've got right now, so that's still, still a work in process. Our next meeting is scheduled for September the 22nd here at Council Chambers at 10:00 a.m. Comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Hi, Mindy. For personal committee, we've had a couple meetings. John is ready to step into deputy supervisor position. And so we are seeking a new superintendent. And hopefully, next meeting, we'll be able to give our recommendation for a new superintendent.
Anyone have questions for Mindy about that? Okay, moving on. Thank you, Mindy. Moving to any other committee reports?
Question.
Yes, to you.
September? You're still on for a meeting? That's what it was.
Oh, for parks, yes.
Okay.
Last Tuesday of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on then to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad, that we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We have an item under old business regarding an amendment to a motion of July 7th, 22, regarding a lease agreement for a postage meter machine. Megan, do you want to talk about that?
Yep. So a month, maybe two ago, we approved the leasing of a postage meter. We had two options in front of us. One was a little bit less expensive than the other. We decided to go with the least expensive option. There was a misunderstanding on my part of the capabilities of that lower-valued model. So it was delivered, it was set up, we tried using it, and it's not what we expected, not what I expected. So I talked to Pitigos, they were willing to let us cancel the lease on the first machine that no one had been building for about a month and upgrade to this new machine. But, but the machine we have now, while it allows us to meter things and change rates, it doesn't include our efficiency any because it's still a single feed, one at a time. I said you can do 50 envelopes a minute. I was like, well, that would be plenty for us. So it was not, and then we still had to seal them because the machine was not sealing them quickly enough. It was easier to just seal them on our home. So this new lease that you have in front of you, I think it's $400 and.
Twenty-three dollars.
Twenty-two dollars a quarter. That wasn't a budget that we originally passed. Could be a budgeted for the most expensive option, was ever budgeted. So there are funds available to do this increase. We would greatly appreciate the support to.
The first one was $177 a month, right?
Quarter.
That was a quarter?
Mm-hmm.
So roughly doubled slightly more.
Yep.
I didn't catch it. Larry did dump in their motion. All I did was the double amount. This was also longer, it went from 48 months to 60 months.
Oh, I.
Are you okay with that?
That is correct, Mindy, but if you want us to go back to the same lease length, I can go back to Pitigos and do that, but I'm confident in this machine, it's a machine I used prior.
Okay, so again, it would be up to you to add that into motion that I set up for you, on whether you want to increase it to 60 months or leave it at 48.
My concern would, if we go to 48, they'd probably try to adjust quarterly.
The quarterly.
Right, it would go up because it's less time.
Yeah. It's a lease, so they, they're going to maintain it, correct? You just have to buy the ink and stuff.
It includes a maintenance agreement, yep, we just have to buy ink. They have a special solution, you can use the seal. You can also use water, or you can mix 550 with water to make it, and it doesn't do anything for the warranty on the machine, so.
Any other discussion regarding the postage meter machine?
I move that we amend the motion of 07-07, 22-06 by changing the quarterly amount to $423.09 and a contract duration from 48 to 60 months.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving into new business, the first item is possible adoption of a new social security policy. So I guess, Megan, you're back up. You're, that's what I mean. Is that Megan?
She, she went through lots of free trainings, and she was the one that the treasurer, the state of Michigan treasurer department had mentioned that we shouldn't have a social security. Was it, wasn't it the treasurer's office? That we should have a policy for social security.
Social security policy. I thought that was already in the policy manual all along. I thought that was in the policy manual all along, the way you.
No, that was one of the things that I found that we didn't have. So as going through that, I've got a one in front of you, and it's very basic. We're actually filing everything that's in it. And I asked that you consider passing the policy. It's all about the privacy of your social security information and how we handle it.
So sorry, Megan, it's not you, it's Devin. Thank you, Devin. Anybody have questions for Devin about this?
Okay, this is a new policy for our internal process, and we don't have one today.
Right, it was highly recommended at the state we should have one in place. And so we haven't been cited, there isn't a problem, but it was simple to make sure that we have it, so.
Here you go. It's a new thing.
Yes.
Any discussion, questions about it, objections to it? If not, I don't think we even need to, well, I guess we do, we need an adoption motion, so.
I move that we adopt the proposed social security policy as presented by the clerk.
Second. Good. Motion from Bob, seconded by Mindy, that we adopt the proposed social security policy as presented by the clerk. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is possible approval of an invoice for GASB statement 75. You, I guess, I'm not even going to say because I don't know.
Let's say it, use it.
It was addressed to you, it must be.
So this is for the audit of our OPED status, we're going to assess whether other tools have been benefits savings. It's what we've set up a trust for. Last year was a full valuation of our funds and our plan for building the funds, but we know a lot of them, we can pay for the health insurance for retired employees that qualify. Every other year, you just need a renewal audit. Every other year, you just need a renewal audit, so it uses the bones from last year's audit and just kind of updates it when anything may have changed this year. So last year, I think this was about a $4,000 expense, so this year, when they completed the audit, it was $1,300 for the renewal.
It's only increased by $100 for this type of audit. It's reasonable.
Any questions? I believe you received a copy of that audit at a meeting that I did not attend in August. If not, I'll double check.
I think we did, yeah. If anybody needs one, though, then I can now show it to you.
I move that we approve the actuarial valuation services from Black Chris Rossing Company to comply with GASB 74 and 75 for an amount not to exceed $1,300.
Thank you. Moved by Larry and seconded by Mindy, all those that are in favor of that motion, as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we just need to address the resignation that we received from Mary Plomin. Any comments, questions, or a motion to accept her resignation?
I move that we accept with regret the resignation of Mary Plomin to the planning commission and extend our appreciation for her services.
Second. We have a motion by Bob, seconded by Chad, to accept Mary's resignation with regret to the planning commission and extend our appreciation for her service. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. So I'll invite the public, letting you know, we now have an opening on the planning commission. They meet once a month, sometimes more often if there are things that need to be addressed. If you're interested in serving on that commission, please let me know. We have an invoice from James Hissong, our grant writer. We canceled our contract with him, but he said if you ever have things you want me to write for you, I'll give you an hourly rate for it. So, he got this out to us, and this is to write for the grant for the sidewalks repair His total is not to exceed a cost of five hours at $75 per hour times five, estimated at five, for $375 for this project. He does go on to explain the type of grant and the description of it. It's a state appropriation grant, or a quote "Michigan enhancement grant" unquote, for sidewalk improvements. It's not a traditional grant program, there's no due dates for the project. Grantsmanship Consulting LLC will work with the City of Perry staff, i.e. John, to contact state legislators seeking an opportunity to submit a Michigan enhancement grant proposal for their consideration. So just opening up for any discussion, if you want to pursue this or...
There's no matching funds required for this either, that is a...
There is not, no, this is not a matching funds grant. There's... If it's ours, it's ours, if it's not, it's not.
I think it's a small investment, go for it. I move that we authorize up to maximum five hours for an amount not to exceed $375 to be paid to Grantsmanship Consulting LLC, which will authorize Grantsmanship Consulting to apply for state appropriation Michigan enhancement grant for the sidewalk improvements and authorize the bureau to sign any and all documents to complete the agreement.
Somebody else second? Mindy, is that you?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of that motion, as made by Larry and seconded by Mindy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Moving on then to our possible adoption of zoning ordinance amendment number 365, and then we will move into the adoption of the ordinance amendment number 366, both regarding medical slash retail marijuana. Any discussion about these? We had our first reading this week. Any discussion, questions? Or if there are none, looking for a motion?
I move that the zoning ordinance number 365, which amends the zoning ordinance regarding medical marijuana, and which was read at the August 18th, 2022, regular council meeting be adopted.
Second. We have a motion by Bob, seconded by Mindy, that the zoning ordinance number 365, which amends the zoning ordinance regarding medical marijuana, and which was read at the August 18th, 2022, regular council meeting be adopted. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Were we both? Can I make one suggested amendment to the motion, rather than just regarding medical marijuana, it would be medical slash adult use marijuana?
I thought it wasn't in there only because it's referring to amending the zoning ordinance regarding medical marijuana.
Well, we read 365 was the adult use. I'll have to go back. I'm just, I'm fine with it as long as it was in our original first reading.
It was, yeah.
Then it should be in there. I accept that amendment through the motion.
I'll withdraw it.
Well, do you think we need it? He's saying he's willing to accept the amendment. I just, I realized it wasn't there, but I thought it didn't need to be there because it was referring to an amendment. But if you think it needs to be there, I'd much rather have it there than...
I'd rather have it there personally because we undid everything we did before, so we technically didn't. As of right now, we don't have anything in the zoning ordinance with regard to marijuana any type.
Okay, so if we amend it to say amend zoning ordinance regarding medical slash...
Adult use.
Adult use.
Adult use.
Marijuana. Is that...
Yes.
So, do you want to read that again as amended? Make that motion again as amended, Bob's?
I move that the zoning ordinance number 365, which amends the zoning ordinance regarding medical marijuana slash adult use marijuana, and which was read at the August 18th, 2022, regular council meeting be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, as amended, made by Bob, seconded by Larry, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Moving on then to our next item, which is ordinance number 366.
I move that ordinance number 366, which amends ordinance regarding medical slash retail marijuana establishments, and which was read at the August 18th, 2022, regular council meeting be adopted.
Second. We have a motion by Larry, seconded by Chad, that ordinance number 366, which amends ordinance regarding medical slash retail marijuana establishment, and which was read at the August 18th, 2022, regular council meeting be adopted. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Moving then on to discussion of a possible new emergency siren for the city. John, do you want to tell us about that since you were there for the testing and all that
So, I finally got him to give me a paper quote. On the front page, it does say one-way, but if you read back through where it says high-power directional, it says one-way and two-way radio controls. So it's not, it's going to be compatible with the county stuff, I just want you to be assured of that. This was his email to us, so. It's going to be basically the exact same siren that is over at the end of White Oak at Jubilee Park. We're looking at putting it, this is tentatively down either by Carl's on Rolf Street, somewhere in the right-of-way on Rolf Street was where the last location was discussed, either up the hill a little further, or, but we already have an electric meter for all the streetlights right there, and instead of paying to set another one, we were just going to try to use that panel and come off there, either there or the lift station, if everything works okay. Depends on the power lines and what location exactly we... If it's primary wires, we have to move it away from them, but if it's just our triplex and whatnot to our services, we would be okay.
How far does it have to be moved away, just...
Just across, we would just probably put it across the street and directional or under Rolf Street with electrical. That's my intentions at this point, and so that's why, you know, it would cost a little more to pull some wire. It's just 220 volt, so it wouldn't be a big, we'd just pull it and casing it across and have to have an electrician or kind of do it across and set it up to the pole, so.
Questions for John?
Or under Rolf or under 52? Rolf Street.
Now, was it their assessment, John, that that being a third siren would pretty much cover our city pretty completely?
Yes, that was the 20, or 2001, there may have been, but I think the 2001 discussion was to put it up there, but they were worried that the old federal signal one at the DPW was going to fail, and then that was the reason that they put it at the end of White Oak. But the owner of Westshore told me that it's best if we just go ahead and run that old one until it dies, because it's, it's been around so long that it's probably one of the more reliable ones that they have out. You know, I don't know how exactly, I don't know exactly how long it's been there, probably at least 50 years or something, would be my estimation, I don't, I'm not sure. But he said run it till it's exhausted, or it costs too much just to maintain it, but it's, it's been a pretty low, low-cost device. So, in short, the owner of Westshore would come out and go over with me the exact location where it would be best suited, but that's from the map that he drew back then, and he concurred that that was a correct, so we might be 400 feet away from where, but I don't think that it's going to have an effect on notifications in that distance, okay?
The one on White Oak has wooden poles as well?
Yes.
Any other questions for John about the siren? Thank you, John. As far as financing this, when I was communicating with James Hissong about the sidewalks and the grant for that, I had said in my email, we want to be able to get sidewalks and possibly a new siren. But when I asked him to provide us with the hours estimate, I didn't know for sure yet what your pleasure was about the sirens, so he did not include siren in his estimate of hours. Maybe it would be the same, but if you decide that you want to go after grant money for this item and want me, I'll just ask James, can you do them both, and, or would we stand a better chance of getting something if we did them separately? Certainly, this wouldn't be more than that $375 if he did charge us separately for it. So, with that in mind...
There may be other areas for this particular thing.
Right, and that's what I would ask him, too. I would send him this information and just have him search that out before...
Yeah, I think we should just go to ask him to do that because no one might have a grant for that. There's, I think there may be federal money or other monies available for a siren.
So, shall we get that information and bring it back again next meeting, or once I have the information anyway for a decision based on that?
Go ahead and put it on the next agenda and see what James can tell us if he's got some other grant opportunities, like Bob said, that fit the bill.
So, can I call it, are you opportunities for siren? Any other questions you want me to ask him or direct his way? If you think of some, just let me know.
John, in this, in the description, it has the option for solar panel, solar battery backup, is that, was that included, do you know? I doubt it.
No, this is to connect to line power with battery backup.
With battery backup?
It has battery backup in it.
So the power, the line holders would charge the batteries, power goes out of the battery.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on from this and I'll get more information. Colonel, do we have any other information about the Chiwasi tornado cyber project, or shall we just...
I don't have anything more to give you than what I gave you under my department report, which was just waiting to hear back from Westshore.
So we'll just hold on to this until you...
I'm sorry, not Westshore, American dollar.
Yeah, till you let us know you have a response.
Yes.
And take this off the agenda? Let's just move, we'll just keep it there and keep moving it till we have the information, so we don't let it fall apart. The next item on our agenda is in regard to the employee appreciation dinner. We talked about this last meeting. And Shirley did contact Lynn Ryder where we went last year, and they are available, so I had her reserve it. The entree options that they would have, and if you'll recall, last time, it was served buffet style, we just went up and, and so we looked at their entree options and thought we'd just do the same thing we did last year, which was a pork, tenderloin, chicken breast, and then the sides were roasted asparagus, mixed fingerling potatoes, caramelized onions. There was aged and veggie medley, and the chicken breast was smothered in sweet orange sauce. That, those two things are a $16 per person price. And last year, we invited 54 people. 35 people came, attended. So last year, we spent $781.20. If we have 54 invited this year and 54 attend, it would come to $864. So it's only a smidgen more than the 35 we had last year. So I was surprised about, those are the numbers. So, any discussion on that? And are you ready to approve that and approve a up-to kind of price thing, or do you want to think about it some more?
So if you do 35...
It is the first Friday of... It is the first Friday of December.
It was a 35 total that showed up as per person. Everything, okay. So if we invited 54, we invited 108. That's how it was originally figured. Because the question was, when we were talking about the motion before, is we weren't sure why we had 1,728 was passed.
Okay.
That's because it was 50, 54 of appointed or city employees total. And then we doubled it.
So they could bring in a person.
And then did it by 16. So your numbers are still correct. But I wanted you to hear that, where we got our number from last year.
Yeah, thank you. That makes a lot more sense. So what's your, what's your thoughts?
Do you have, do we have it reserved right now?
We do have the room reserved. We just have not indicated a price, what, what we wanted to go with as far as the food.
Can we bring a motion to the next meeting so that we can see a number?
Sure.
The number would be 108 times 16, basically, right?
Yeah, it would, but we can do that. And that would only be if everybody came. So that would be our maximum number. Chances are like last year, it would be less. Yeah, no, we can put that in the form of a motion, can't we, never?
You betcha.
Okay. So we'll bring that back with a motion prepared. Moving to our last item then on our agenda, which is a discussion regarding something that Bob presented a couple of weeks ago, I'm thinking. Discussion to hire a parks director.
My thought on that was everyone is spread thin and voluntary. And it's hard to get volunteers. Somebody who may be educated in parks and rec will know different, a lot more than I do about equipment and grants and plans, writing plans. And, you know, we're doing things off of other municipalities, which they often let us do that. But somebody that can dedicate more time than a volunteer. That's what my thought was. I know where I lived before, Brandon Township. When they hired the Parks Rec Director, I wasn't necessarily on board, but after I saw what he did, it paid for itself. He purchased property or got it donated or whatever, built soccer fields, urbanize very often. They just, just saw recently they finally got everything finalized and now they have like two more baseball fields. So it takes time and they're a bigger area than us. We'd have to also have conversations with Perry Township. But I think it's something we look into. At first, it's certainly not a full-time person. It would be part-time. And I have no idea what the wages would be or anything like that. It's just a, just a thought to try to take it away from some volunteers. You know, it's, it's hard to do everything.
Do you, do you think that person then would take the place of the parks committee?
No, I think the parks committee could still have a function. But that, that person could have, would maybe that would be, the parks committee would be like the oversight and bring things to council from that. But that person can have a little more authority to research and do other things right up. And maybe it is, evolves into a standalone position. Meaning they have the authority to run it and they run. Because I don't know how, what we do here in this, for Little League and that kind of stuff, so.
I think that goes to the schools. Kyle, do you know that? The, like the summer rec program and.
It's its own organization. I'm sorry. It's its own organization. There is a Perry youth baseball softball association that runs that. And there's a soccer program that does the same. It's the Perry Morris Schafsburg Community Soccer Program. They have their own, I know the, I know the softball baseball has their own board.
Do they?
That organizes all that. And then the soccer program, I don't know that they have a board, but they have volunteers that organize and run it.
So it's separate from the school?
The school's always promoted, but it's not affiliated with the school.
The only thing we had, and again, this final experience with Brandon Township is where it was at. Little League, or it wasn't Little League, but the baseball program, softball program was all through the township, through the rec department. Only separation in a sense was football. We had Pee-wee football that was its own entity. But we leased or rented the fields from the rec department, from the school indirectly. So I think there's a, could be a symbiotic relationship between all these people and, and, you know, and one person or group looking at it. I don't know. I just, I just know I can't, certainly cannot fulfill or commit the time that I need to commit or should be given to this importance of it.
What you feel would make it lots faster.
Yeah, we have a lot of needs here for our parks. And I just, you know, with a full-time job and Sesa and this, and I just can't do what it really deserves to be done. And then relying on volunteers, it's, it's really hard.
If we look to see, Bob, is there anybody else in small communities around the state like our size or slightly bigger that have a part-time parks administrator or anything?
I haven't done any research at all or honestly, I haven't.
I mean, that would be a point that is somebody already doing it that we could, that could learn from to scope how big it is and what the wages might be and how successful they might, you know, may have been.
Like it's, is that, Megan, is that Langsberg that were borrowing their park stuff?
Yep, Langsberg is the ones that recently did their own.
So they have a, I don't know if they have a rec director, but they have a big rec department, you know, that's their, so. It's similar in our size. It's not Atlas Rapids. But again, it would have to definitely have a conversation with the township. Because I'm sure the people in the township would like to utilize or do utilize our stuff. We could have, you know, and this is spitballing, a parks pass, you know, and oh, you pay whatever it is. You're in the township, the city, you get to do this stuff and no cost, whatever. There's, there's always a cost to everything, but there's. It needs to be have time and dedication to it, which I cannot get.
But if the parks director is getting paid by the city, then city participants would be funded through that.
Yes, absolutely.
And then the township people who would be involved would have to pay for this pass or something along that line.
All, yes, all those things would have to be worked out, hashed out. It's just a, you know, a starting point.
Megan, how much extra time do you have? Do you think you could help me research this at least and put something together in writing? Kind of a report of this is what Langsberg does. This is what they pay their director or, you know, and search around a little bit. Do you think we could put something like that together in the next month or so and then get it to council to review so they would have more structured information and dollar figures that it would take?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Anything else that we want to have added to that research other than what we've talked about? Any other business then that might come before council tonight? Anyone for public comment? Council discussions and observations? Items for our next agenda then would be the grant opportunity to review for the possible siren and prepare a motion with the maximum number for the appreciation dinner. But then the credit card use policy and switch to a credit card in place, we would do that at the first meeting of October. So Megan would be here.
I'm just going to put that in the subject line.
Okay, all right. Anything else anybody has?
We'll have a couple of resolutions that Adam and I spoke of. One would be the marijuana fee schedule for applications. That will be a resolution. And then also we'll set, a resolution that would set the actual application dates, timing lottery, et cetera, for the marijuana activity. And just generally speaking, we're looking at roughly mid-October to mid-November will be about the dates that we'll be looking at accepting applications. But we'll nail those exact dates down in the resolution at our next meeting.
And so people have said to me, well, then when would it actually go into effect? Based on amount of time that's needed for the public posting and so forth? That's right around when?
Yeah, the ordinance would become effective 30 days after it's published in the newspaper. And that takes us out into early October. I forget the exact date, October the 7th or 8th is when the ordinance is in effect. We would start the application process shortly after that. And then we'd be looking at actually conditional license awarding in the, near the end of November kind of timeframe.
With the lottery?
With the lottery, after the lottery is completed.
All right. Anything else? If not, 8 o'clock, we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for all your work. Appreciate it.